Nance, please call the roll.
Pulcitus?
Here.
Bala?
Here.
Hayleyner?
Here.
Bangard?
Here.
Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Yep.
Petrowa?
Here.
Werbung?
Here.
Besner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Alderman Hayleyner.
As we approach the special holiday of Thanksgiving, we take time this evening to give thanks for those opportunities provided us to be of service to our community. Help us all as citizens of St. Charles to be aware of those times we can be a blessing to others and to give of ourselves with grateful hearts. Amen.
Alderman, Weber, would you please lead us in the pleasurable way?
I would be honored. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is its one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations this evening, so Alderman Bancroft, the omnibus vote.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote for Monday, November 15, 2021, as reflected in our agenda.
Second.
Motion by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni. Any discussions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Thank you. Your business, item A, Chief.
Hi, I have one item this evening. Item A is a recommendation to approve an application for a location change for massage licenses for International Massage Association located at 2210 Dean Street. This appeared earlier today at the Liquor Control Commission in advance forward. Michael Devoe is here to my right, your left. Michael's been in business since 2016. He recently renewed his application in May of this year. It's really the same address, just a different suite. The city in kind waived the fees. He just renewed in May, like I said, and his new lease is going to take effect on December 1st, which is why we took it straight to city council. Either Mike or myself can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Chief? Yes, I'll take them.
Yeah, just procedure-wise, Chief, I mean, I'm okay with this.
Sure.
I just was curious, what can be done administratively? Isn't this one of those things that can be, or no?
Unfortunately, looking at the code, and I reviewed this with council, it has to go in front of council for right now. Obviously, if that's the direction that you want me to pursue, I can-
No, no, that's fine. I just was curious, because I know some things are and some things aren't. Okay.
This particular item had to be taken because it's considered a new license, because it's a physically new address.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Werbung. Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, a recommendation to approve an ordinance confirming and extending a declared state of emergency within the city of St. Charles due to the COVID-19 pandemic until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Move for approval. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Bancroft. Any questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
No.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
No.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I meant to vote no on that last one.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, items C and D, I'll read them. We have discussion in committee. Staff is available for questions and comments, but I'll read each of them and then we'll take questions after the motion and the second. C, recommendation to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $13,600,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond series 2021A for the purpose of financing certain capital projects and refunding certain of the city's outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Move for approval.
Moved by Besner?
Second.
Seconded by Lencioni. Any questions?
At one.
Yes.
Just to check, since our presentation, has there been any material changes in the rate environment? No, is it, yeah.
Actually, I updated down toward the agenda when it's sent out on Friday, so the new numbers are there. And actually, we are 20 things different, so we are moving from $500,000 to $20,000.
We just get it done as quick as possible, and we're not in your way.
Okay. Any other questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, recommendation to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $25 million general obligation corporate purpose refunding bond series 2021B for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding bonds, providing for the levy of taxes to pay said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Move approval. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Werbung. Any questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, I'll turn it over to Colleen Labrie to go through E and F.
Good evening. The city has had a cyber insurance policy in place since December 2014. Last year, the only change to the policy was to spend an additional $4,100 to increase the coverage limit to $4 million from $3 million. However, as a result of the current cyber marketplace, this year, there was a question as to whether the city would even be able to secure a cyber insurance policy. And this is in spite of our insurance consultant sending and contacting 57 different carriers and requesting a quote on our behalf. The quotes for the policies that are being recommended this evening were only received last Thursday afternoon, and this is despite, again, this is only because Assurance, our insurance program consultant, was in constant contact and outreach and requesting a quote on our behalf. This situation reflects the current imbalance of cyber, cyber, coverage, supply, and demand. The only quote the city has received, and again, that was last Thursday, for cyber insurance, was from Westchester. The cost of this policy, $294,320, and provides coverage of $2 million with a $500,000 deductible. Last year, the city paid $36,609 for a $4 million coverage limit with a deductible of only $25,000. After having time to consider this, a few hours, I contacted Bob Davidson, who is on our consulting team, and I asked, I said, "Why wouldn't the city be better off just putting $2 million in a reserve and paying out should something happen on our incident, rather than paying a premium and having a deductible that high?" In response, I was reminded that the cyber policy not only reduces our financial risk, but it also provides loss mitigation and after-incident services, which are necessary to bring our systems, to bring the city whole, and combat, you know, all the issues that go along with contacting the FBI, creating a cyber currency account, all these different things that the city itself is not equipped to do. So along with the financial risk mitigation, there are these other services that are important should the city have a cyber incident. I have asked, this being such a huge difference and such a high dollar amount, obviously, it's shaking me, still has, I have asked Bobby Dufkus and Bob Davidson, who work for Assurance, they're part of our team, have been a part of our team, to come to our meeting tonight to discuss their marketing efforts, our cyber policy, and really answer any other questions you may have. I did provide materials after I did my own research, along with the agenda, that there was a nice summary from RPS about what has happened to the environment in the last couple of years. But they are the experts, and they can help, I guess, they can help answer any questions you may have. So I'll introduce Bob Davidson and Bobby Dufkus from Assurance.
Colleen, you did a great job of explaining, you know, the state of the marketplace and our marketing efforts. You know, like Colleen said, we approach 57 markets that are well right beside reliability. It's a very, very tough market. I've been doing this for 25 years and gone through hard markets, but never seen anything like this. And it's not only for public sector, municipality, school districts, it's every industry that is out there that is facing this dilemma of securing cyber liability. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I can talk about a little bit more in depth of our marketing efforts. Again, so we generally, just as a regular course of action, start about four months out from the effective date to start to talk to markets, gather information. Colleen's been great about submitting, and then go to the marketplace. This year, we saw the deterioration of the marketplace a little earlier this year and maybe even into last year. The acceleration of the deteriorations really caught us, I mean, I would say, as an industry off guard in the last, I could say, six months, and really, it's almost like a weekly thing where we get more bad news about, say, a market pulling out of cyber, or maybe deciding not to cover public entities. So anyway, again, we had an ongoing effort with the entire marketplace, trying to unturn every stone in order to get, again, any kind of terms and pricing in that. So as we did that, obviously, as Colleen said, we just got an offer really in our hands last Thursday. It was a shock to us. We unfortunately are seeing other similar renewals such as this, as far as the price increases, the deductible increases. Sometimes the limits, the terms and the limits will come down, and unfortunately, that is the marketplace sort of dictating it. And that's just sort of how the underwriting is going. I can't tell you how great it's been to work with Colleen and Larry Gunderson, Steve Wyshar. They've been extremely helpful in providing information in a timely manner, just to get the position right.
And we've been working with Colleen and Carol Lee as well for the last six months or so, trying to manage expectations of the changing and evolving in the marketplace of cyber, so there weren't any surprises other than the premium. But any surprise as far as the marketing and what the markets are dictating to the public?
Thank you. I know there's questions and comments, Alderman Bancroft.
So I don't know how many on this council have experience with this, but I do. And I will tell you, you know, an insurance policy where it's a 45% deductible, basically, when you have the premium in the deductible, that makes no sense financially. And I am skeptical that the infrastructure that the insurance company would provide that you think would be supportive in the case of an incident is going to be, you know, as much of a benefit as you think it is. So, and what I mean by that is, you know, they have a preferred vendor list. Typically, that preferred vendor list, maybe they have a break on some of the charges and some of the costs in an incident like this, but the truth of the matter is, is that, in my opinion, you'd be much better off having a lawyer that understands the liability aspects of it, and you'd be better off having your current, whoever knows your infrastructure best, on a retainer to be available in case of a response. I think if you had those two things, you're already in a much better situation. So I'm not in favor of this.
Okay. Alderman Pulcitus?
Again, I have to agree with Todd.
That's twice.
Twice the shares. It's not, I understand the principle of insurance, I mean, I've never experienced it like you have. I understand the theory behind it, but pretty soon, I mean, if they keep going this rate, I mean, he's going to be a bit better off to self-insure. I mean, because we, it's only going to cover, well, $2 million and then $2 million on the next item, too. I just don't see the benefit of spending 20% necessarily on a premium. I mean, luckily, we haven't had any, to my knowledge, any problems here. I'm just leery about, I never did figure out what percentage increase it was, but it's not a good increase. But I will support it to the point that we don't have any plans on how to do anything else yet. That's the one thing, we don't have a setup how to deal with this next year when it comes up. But I think we need to think about self-insuring and do ourselves, put money aside to cover it. If we need it, then we need it. If we don't, well, then we only, in theory, we only put, you put in one amount, $4 million in reserves, if we never use it, we don't have to pay any more for in the years to come until we need it. So, thank you.
Alderman Werbung, I'm sorry.
Have we had any incidents that you were?
We've had no instance of any material effect on our operations.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Alderman Werbung?
I T Director, this is for you. Have we, you know, based on this huge increase, have we done any, you know, market research or some kind of risk analysis of like how secure our system is and, you know, what's the exposure, like what are we doing to try to limit some of this internally?
Certainly, that's a good question. So we've had a security program in place for about four years, I mean, an official formal security program. We adopted a set of industry best practices, security controls, controls being countermeasures to counteract a threat. And we had those business best practices in place for four years now, and we're steadily each year implementing more security controls, and they're based on risk and impact, so they're prioritized. So we are implementing and have a set of controls in place, so we have a good understanding of where we are relative to our risk. But as always, it's an evolving, maturing program. But I will say, from a security control perspective, we are in a better position today than we were a year ago when we selected our last cyber insurance provider.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bancroft?
Colleen, so a bunch of questions. Number one, if you had an incident, who would you call?
We have the Center for Internet Security. It's a consortium that's funded through the Department of Homeland Security, and we're a member of this consortium, so that's been, that'd be our first call.
And they provide resources to help mitigate the situation?
Yes, yes.
So then presumably, you wouldn't be relying on the insurance company's mitigation efforts?
Well, depending upon the type of incident, there's several things. There's remediation, there's recovery, there's a number of steps. Certainly, an insurance provider would provide additional resources that we would have available right away, but we do have that initial response capability.
Yeah, I think you're overestimating their availability. So again, in my opinion, I think, and just to be honest, not only does the plan for our security rest in what you just described in your efforts, but so does the response in the event that there's an incident. It's that simple. It really is. And I think this should be viewed as nothing more than a source of funds that we are paying for access to, and that you should assume that you are going to get aggressive responses back from an insurance company if a claim is submitted about the nature of the claim, what happened, what efforts were taken, what decisions you made along the way. I mean, it's an entirely different world. So, you know, again, from a response standpoint, you know, I would have Attorney Peppers find us the right, you know, resource, and I have a list of names that would be, you know, in place that you can call from a legal perspective, that know what notices need to go out, if there's a data breach, that know what to do in a variety of different, you know, situations, and have a meeting or two and then have them sitting on the fence. They work by the hour, they respond when you call. And then in terms of mitigation efforts, I mean, I strongly encourage us to put a plan in place that says, if we are attacked, if we have, you know, a data lock, if we have, you know, whatever happens, these are the contractors we're going to call and put them in place. Because I think that that is a much better, more well-thought-out plan than just spending $300,000 on an insurance policy that may or may not help the night it happens.
I will say, though, that this is in addition to those sort of things to have in place, an instant response plan, disaster recovery plan, those are the types of policies, plans that need to be in place regardless of insurance.
Alderman Bangard, do you have questions?
What types of threats are most common? So, you know, in black and white, what are we most fearful against?
There are a number of threats. The one that is obviously getting the most press because of the prevalence as well as the impacts is ransomware, mainly because of the fact that there's a lot more fertile ground for, as opposed to stealing information, financial information, something like a ransomware attack has a broader base of potential targets.
Do those targets tend to go after the city, or they go after the individuals? So if I gather, if I do a data breach, I'm trying to get everybody here's information so I can go after them individually, or do they target more, you know, municipality, city organization?
They target any, anybody responding to it? Yeah, they're opportunistic.
Okay.
And they get paid in Bitcoin?
Love Bitcoin, love Bitcoin.
If you elect to do that.
Yes.
Yes, Alderman Pulcitus and Alderman Hayleyner?
Does this insurance cover ransomware for pain? But that would come out of the $2 million coverage, correct?
Correct, that's the limit for that group.
For the whole thing? So if we have, if something should happen, heaven forbid, then they want it $700,000, then we'd be left with $700,000, then it'd leave us $1.3 million to cover all the other expenses.
Correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Hayleyner?
Yeah, if you don't mind, a question for Alderman Bancroft. Todd, I've listened, look, I've listened with, I have zero experience with this, except maybe, you know, a personal run-in with something, but you've had experience with this in your business, correct? And so you've kind of waved the warning flag a couple of times, so I take to heart what you're saying here. How urgent is this right now as opposed to doing a long-term plan that Alderman Bancroft kind of suggested? Can we do?
Our current council expires December 1st.
Okay, so is that time? Probably not, huh?
So all this is, is it looks like you're paying $700,000 to maybe get some portion of a million three, in my opinion. That's all, this is just about money. I don't believe the resources that will be brought to bear, you know, the insurance company doesn't tie a cape on and fly in and save the day. They don't. You, you know, you are going to engage whatever professionals you already have in place to mitigate the situation. I will tell you, sitting on this day, is I did not and will never vote to pay ransomware. Do you mind one? I will not do that. So to me, the fact that it would be available for that is immaterial to me. I won't do it.
Okay.
Just on principle. When you talk to the FBI, they like that position, too. They don't want to encourage it. So, no, so, you know, to me, it's just to pay $300,000 to get, you know, a million five in coverage that I think is going to be suspect at best, and isn't going to be there, you know, immediately to solve the situation. Eventually, there may be some mitigation by it. It's not worth it.
City Administrator Heather McGuire.
Thank you, I certainly appreciate those comments, and we had the same discussion at staff level of this is a very significant increase as we're talking about some of our operational needs and some of the things that we need to focus on. The issue became this expiration of this policy December 1st, and certainly, we would be remiss at a staff if we did not come to council and present the options that December 1st, this coverage will last, we will not have it any further. If the decision as a council is to move forward and explore alternate options, we can continue going back out to the market to see if something comes back, if we get any cheaper rates, or put an alternate plan in place, understanding that risk that's associated with it.
If that's the case, is the motion then to postpone this for further discussion because we're going to lapse anyway?
I was just going to say, it can be either a vote to turn it down. I mean, Nick, I don't know if you've got a preference, we can table it, we can just not take action on it this evening.
I'm not too sure what you gain out of tabling the matter, if the policy's going to expire on 12/1, unless you're playing on having a meeting in the interim. I mean, you can always bring this back in on whatever agenda you want to bring it back on.
Exactly.
Whether it's this as extended or a new opportunity, I don't know if tabling gets anything.
And ultimately, that's what it would be, would be coming forward with a different proposal. It sounds like, at least the people that have spoken so far, are not in favor of the amount of money on this, and frankly, I think Colleen and I had the same concerns as we were talking about such a significant increase from our previous policy. But again, to unilaterally make that decision at a staff level and say, "We're no longer going to protect the city from the cyber policy without bringing that before council," I think, was not the right decision from our perspective.
Okay. Sure. Alderman Werbung?
Just a question for Larry. Are there things that you need, resources that you need to mitigate the risk? Would it be, if we have $300,000 here, would it be better to invest in resources with our IRS department?
Just to be clear, we actually don't have $300,000. The amount budgeted for this was the initial $37,000 to $50,000, and now we're going to have to come up with $500,000 to support this. So I know that Larry's probably can get into a little bit more about the specific measures that have already been taken, and as part of this process, review the security protocols that are in place to assess what our coverage level would be to make sure that we are doing the necessary measures to protect the city anyway.
Yep, Alderman Lencioni.
Couple things. One, I think Alderman Bancroft brings up a great point in saying that, I mean, we're upside down after five years if we don't get hit. Second, I have seen this, I have close friends at a, you know, incredibly large company that got hit with this, and they nearly scrapped the entire company. So, I mean, if nobody's seen anything like this, when they lock you down and you can't bill anybody, and you're just out of your computers, and everybody's just cell phone and texting each other, I mean, it's scary things, but the FBI comes in and everything that Alderman Bancroft said is correct. I mean, you scramble the jets, so there's no easy way through that. So I echo your comments, I definitely support that, because we just get upside down on our ratios really quick. I mean, it's not really insurance, it's a gamble that we're going to get hit by something, and I mean, if we don't get hit in under four years, we're way upside down.
Good.
Okay.
Just clear down what Alderman Lencioni say, you support what, Paul? I'm sorry.
Uh, what?
Oh, 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 okay, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion to deny the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, moved by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni, just so everyone understands, by you voting yes, you're in fact denying the motion. So a yes vote is that you're not in favor of this recommendation here in the council agenda, just so we have clarification. Any other questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Okay, item S. I don't think we need to do any more talking, so I'm just looking for the same thing.
To do that same policy.
Yes, go ahead.
If I can make a recommendation, though, it would be a really useful period of time, whether it's a special meeting or in this meeting, to have a discussion about what the city has in place in terms of not only, you know, less about the existing infrastructure, you know, presumably that's best practices, but more about, you know, you know, some things that we've talked about, Larry, is actually sitting down and, you know, at some point in time, having the entire team do, you know, a tabletop version of what a cyber attack looks like, and how you do it, and who you call, and where you go, and how it works. All that is, you know, it's a very interesting exercise to go through. So, and then a presentation at council about what the findings are would be good.
Yeah, I'd like to determine the best form for that discussion, but I think it's a great idea.
Thank you for your comments, thank you for your time, both. Okay. F? Do you want to deny that one, too?
I'll move to deny.
Okay, move back, Petrowa? Who's taking the second? Seconded by Besner? Any other comments? Nancy, please call the roll.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbung?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pulcitus?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Hayleyner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Just want to make sure we're recommending denial, right?
Yes, correct.
So, yeah.
Okay, we just need to make a quick adjustment with the omnibus vote. Alderman Bancroft?
Yeah, so what it looks like is, what, the first three items in government services?
Yes, are in the actual committee coming up.
So we really can't do an omnibus vote before we have the committee approval.
Excellent point.
So I would move to, can we amend the vote? Nick?
If you're going to change your vote on the omnibus, you have to move to reconsider that matter.
Okay, so I would move to reconsider the omnibus vote by removing items B1, B2, and B3.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni. Any questions on that? Because then we're going to have to move the omnibus vote after.
Correct.
Okay, cool. All right, Nancy, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your motion?
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Lencioni.
Should have reconsidered.
The motion to re-
we reconsider, then we're going to vote the omnibus through. Cool. Go.
Pacilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pocaitis?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Payliner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lentioni?
Yes.
Okay, so, so right now, we're reconsidering the omnibus vote without those three items, correct?
Correct, you're going to do it like you did it all over again.
Okay, so I, so I move for approval of the omnibus vote as reflected in the agenda dated November 15, 2021. Please speak out.
Moved by Bancroft, second by Weber. Nancy, please call the roll.
Pacilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pocaitis?
Yes.
Bala?
Yes.
Payliner?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lentioni?
Yes.
So then the only question is, is do these three need to be voted on council tonight?
No, they do not, they will be on the committee meeting.
Okay, so the committee meeting's all you need, you don't need to come back to council for anything?
Correct. Okay, committee report for Alderman Pocaitis.
Yeah, thank you. Item 85, motion to approve the preliminary estimate of 2021 property tax levy in the amount of $24,576,475.
Second?
Moved by Pocaitis, second by Bezner. May I make a comment?
Yes, and, yes, may I like to make a comment first?
I just would like to go through a couple of points that I know we have to, Alderman who have gone through this, the last committee meeting, and committee meetings prior, have spent a lot of time and effort with staff to come to a conclusion, and I, as I did last meeting, I will do it again, I applaud the committee members, the council that has, that will be voting yes on this very tough matter. So just a couple of points that I would like to read into the record. So the city is increasing its tax levy, if voted upon, by 4.99% for 2022. On average, residents in a $300,000 house will contribute an additional $40 for a total of $820 annually to help pay for a full year of city services. I want to emphasize that. Due to rising inflation rates, the cost of doing business has increased. The city, city's property tax levy has been flat for seven of the last 10 years. Inflation rates have jumped nearly 28% in that time. The city's portion of taxes is, and the city is one, one of 10 taxing bodies on the property tax bill. It's about 10% of the entire tax bill, of entire property tax bill goes to the city of St. Charles. 90% of that bill goes to other taxing bodies that we have no control over. On average, residents in a $300,000, as I mentioned, will contribute a total of $820. That helps pay for a full year of city services, many of them around the clock, as you know, public works, police, fire. Today, the city has 300 employees, and that is down from about 370 in 2008. And there were no property tax levy increases from 2010 to 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or discussion? Now open the floor up. Alderman Werbal.
Yeah, just, just want to make a couple of comments. We are in the process of hiring an economic development director, so I would like to see what our director can do as far as bringing new businesses to our community to bring in that additional sales tax revenue. Also, we have the American Rescue Plan where we're getting, we already got 2.2 million, and we're supposed to get another 2.2 million. So for me, I'd like to hold off on raising the property tax levy, so I will not support the increase.
Any other comments?
Since I did not make any comments at my previous committee meetings, a couple of comments. As has been alluded to already, we're going to get 4.4 million, which is a good chunk of change. I'd like to see where that money's going to go to. Plus, the other concern is the county is going, is considering raising the property taxes. County's also going to raise the gas tax. As much as I see the need for it, I'd like to see, and plus, we're going to have that new bill that the, actually, the president signed, signed today, I don't know how much money that is, I heard Illinois is going to get 17 million, 17 billion for, is what the last I heard. I'd like to see where that money, how much we get of that. So at this time, I would rather wait till next year, I understand the need, and if we need to do it next year, I would gladly vote for it, but since we have all these, and I will admit, these are one-time grants, I understand that, we're not going to get this every year. I'd like to see how, where this money goes to and how we can use it. So at this time, I'd be voting no for it.
Okay, then, are there any other comments? Because then I think we need to revise the, because technically, you just made the, you made, you moved.
I can do that, I can move, but I can still vote no.
Oh, you can? Okay, I thought you couldn't move it if you're voting no.
Yeah, excuse me, Mary, yeah, he can make a motion and vote no, he's just putting the matter on the table for discussion.
Oh, thank you, okay, cool. Okay, any other comments?
So, any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Pacilla?
No.
Werbal?
No.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?